I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for April 18, 2023. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Jelka?
Here.
Bailey?
Here. Would everyone please join us in a moment of silence to reflect on our actions today? Thank you. Would you please join us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The agenda is received. Item two is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that has anything they'd like to speak on today that is not on today's agenda? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom? Seeing no one on that as well. We'll move on to claims and payments. Item three, resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Veder?
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
This week, we are paying a total of $449,415.44. Only even semi-large payment in there. We are starting our spring rock replacement on the roads. There is a payment of about $55,000 for rock. And then the sheriff's 64th fund, we are paying $3,032.74 today. Everything appears to be in order.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I did have a question on one of the sheriff's expenses.
Yes.
And I think it was regarding furniture. I was wondering if that was an ARPA expense or if you know anything about it.
The bill we're paying today for the design is not. The construction I know is being paid with ARPA. I'm not sure yet about the furniture. I didn't get an answer on that.
Oh, okay. Great. Yeah, appreciate you looking into that. Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded. If there are no further questions, please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Item four is a presentation from One City. Mr. Dean Feltes, Executive Director, is here today to make a presentation on this organization.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time today, the opportunity to spend a few minutes to talk about One City United and our upskilling program that we're looking to do. Let me get this full screen.
You've already answered one of my questions. We thought it was One City United, but I wasn't sure, and I've seen it both ways.
Yes, AKA One City. We go by One City.
All right.
So we exist to teach, train, and equip individuals that have really significant barriers to employment. And one of those programs that we have is called Momentum. And Momentum is a six-week employment program that really focuses on those that have those barriers to help them to get quality employment, full-time employment, to overcome those significant barriers, to be equipped to overcome those. Some of the barriers that we work through are criminal background, past addiction, homelessness, transportation, people that are completely unemployed or woefully underemployed. I want to, first of all, talk about, this is a three-year successful program that has just been so successful, way beyond our possible wildest dreams of success. And I want you to meet Charlie. Charlie is an amazing guy. He graduated from Term Eight Momentum in February of 2022. And Charlie's a certified welder with CPM. Charlie was in the Blackhawk County Jail 57 times. Charlie was in prison, state or federal, for 14 years of his life. He's just 40. For the last three weeks of this six-week program called Momentum, Charlie worked second shift full-time as a welder at CPM, as well as going to classroom 9:00 to 12:30 every day. He graduated from Momentum. He joined CPM in Waterloo. And here's what Charlie has to say about Momentum. He said, "Momentum is the reason I've been able to excel at working in life. It really changes you from the inside and helps you see that you can succeed in life and have the life that you want. Without Momentum, I would no doubt be back in prison." CPM, the production manager at CPM, said this about Charlie. He said, "That's what we're all about at CPM, giving people an opportunity. We need more people like Charlie working with us." Charlie's a great welder, a great employee, and a great influence to others he works I talked to Charlie at length yesterday, and one of the questions I asked him, because what we're talking about today, we're really hoping that you will partner with us in this, is to do an upskilling center, to give men and women a very technical skill so they can go into the workplace and really excel. I asked Charlie, I said, "Why is it important to have both Momentum and your welding certificate? Why is that a big deal?" And Charlie said this. He said, "It gave me both sets of tools that I needed. Momentum for my personal life and personal growth, and welding for my career. Without having both, my confidence would have been much lower. I walked into CPM with confidence personally and confidence in my work skills, and it made all the difference." Combining those two together, where you have that personal growth, where things change here and things change here, and then to have that skill as you walk into the workplace, obviously Charlie had that skill when he came out of prison, but Momentum is what helped him to really grow personally, to learn how to communicate with other people, emotional intelligence, all the things that we teach and train through Momentum. And so Charlie is, Charlie's an amazing guy. He's doing amazing things. Charlie's a light when he walks into the room. Charlie volunteers at One City. He talks to classes. He speaks to the people that are coming through Momentum. He encourages them. He talks about his life story, about all the things he's been through. Of the people that come into Momentum, 84% have past or present drug use, 82% pass incarceration, 85% completely unemployed, 30% homeless, most with unreliable transportation, no license, no vehicle, very significant barriers. We have a 63% graduation rate. Our employment placement rate is 95%. Our 90-day retention is 94%. And our recidivism rate for graduates, those returning back to prison, 2%. Amazing. When you add that skill to what they get in Momentum as they graduate, you add those trainings in an upskilling way in this environment. See, we say why, you know? What are the gaps? Why do we need an upskilling center? The challenge is, as someone that has really significant barriers, their biggest fear is walking into work that first day. To have someone that has that major barriers in their life and gone through a six-week program and graduated, to have them start in a traditional technical training school, like a college program or something like that, to them, in their mind, it's unattainable. It's not something they've ever considered. It's not something they believe that they can do. So to have an upskilling center that can work straight from Momentum and move them into an upskilling environment where they can have this ongoing support, where they can get this technical training, where they can get the encouragement, the wraparound services that they need, a lengthened state of sobriety is critical for them to walk in, as Charlie walked in, feeling not only good about himself personally, but good about his skill as he walks in. That confidence level that it produces to have both Momentum graduation and to have an upskilling in a upskilling center, like, we're going to call it One City Academy, is really critical. When you experience these, when you experience success in your life, it's priceless. As you watch people experience success, as you watch them experience this Momentum graduation where they see themselves differently, see their values, see their worth, they see their talent, and now they can put it to work, it makes all the difference in the world. One City Academy is going to help graduates apply what they've learned through skills training in a real work environment with added supports that they need to really thrive. I'm going to have Jim come up now. He's part of our Business Development Committee, and he's going to walk you through a few more things.
Good morning. My name's Jim Horton. I'm a retired engineer and business manager from Caterpillar Incorporated. I moved up here to be with family and grandchildren. I was blessed to retire a little early, so I've got energy. I don't sit well. So I plug in with organizations like Loving and One City, and it keeps me engaged and keeps me learning, quite frankly. So that's my role. I am the Chair of the Business Development Committee, for my experience in that I'm on the board. And the purpose is, again, to equip people. We want to provide quality employment while people are going through their six-week Momentum course. And in the afternoons, they'll have that time to do that. And we also want to provide actual hands-on upskill opportunities. And we're going to talk about what those are in just a moment. Reminder that the people are a little bit fragile, so continuing on and having people there to support them and mentor them is a good thing for an extended period of time. Secondary goal, we hope we're successful enough to make a little bit of money to help One City. And then we have this 8,000-square-foot floor space there that's dilapidated. It used to be an old grocery store, but it could be used quite wisely, and we'd like to use that productively. So, the first success story for our business development team was a business called To Work. As we said, 86%, 87% of our clients that go through Momentum don't have reliable transportation. So, one of our graduates actually came up with the idea that we could provide that transportation and do it as a social program, as well as a money-making program for One City. So we kicked it off, and it's been operational since May of 2022. We did put together a business plan. We thought by now we would be providing about 400 transports, and that's to and from work each day. And last month, we actually did 550, so that was our record month. We pick people up at the county prison worker release. We have our Momentum graduates. We have some word-of-mouth people, other people that need help. We have people that have moved into the country and don't have transportation and need to get to and from Tyson and other places. So we've helped quite a few people. It's neat to interact with them. I've actually provided some of the rides, and it's pretty neat. It's a 22-hour schedule. We start picking people up at 4:00 in the morning. We don't finish till 2:00 o'clock the next morning. We have two to three people, part-time drivers, that cover that. And the neat part is, so far, we've been 100% of getting clients to work on time, which is a big issue for keeping their jobs. I get out of prison, I get off drugs, I get a job, I have a friend or a family member going to take me to work, and after a couple weeks, something happens and I don't get to work, I lose my job. And that's kind of a vicious cycle. So our program's been very successful. We are a service-slash-profitable business. We want to keep the rates very, very affordable, but we were able to generate $13,000 of profit in the eight months last year. So we're kind of excited about that. As you start a business, you never know. It wouldn't be a typical great business if I was out on the side, but we're also a service organization, so that's kind of key. So what's this upskill center? CNC computer, American-controlled machining, computer-controlled plasma cutting, and 3D printing technicians. Those are skills that are in need across the United States, and we believe we have people and the organization and the capability to provide that hands-on training. So we'd like to upskill them. It's a targeted four-month program where they'd go through classes, basic machining math, basic machining print reading, basic measurement tools, things like that, and then hands-on. And then after they finish the four-month training, we'll actually have them stay and continue to work with the machinery and generate actually production parts for local job shops. We hope to be able to peak shape with local job shops. We've talked to several of them, and they have trouble getting all their jobs done. Our goal is to place 100% of the people post-graduation. Talking to Blackhawk and other people, that seems very, very viable. We realize people are going to start in the $18 to $20-an-hour range with the experience level they have, but the neat part is it makes them economically mobile. Most of us are economically mobile, and that's a huge thing in life. If they have to move to a different city, change a job, they can do that. They can bring their skill with it, and that's a phenomenal thing. It gives them a $22 to $32-an-hour wage, which is attractive and with benefits. Charlie's got five children. His job with benefits has been life-changing for his family. So, total funds, we put together a business plan required is $1.5 million. The first step is to take that 8,000-square-feet that we have and get it updated into what we call a white box. Again, it's pretty dilapidated. It's got holes, ventilation holes on the wall and things like that. We have gotten a quote to do that would be approximately $570,000. So that'd be our phase one. The second part would be that we would actually start putting machinery, approximately $600,000 of machine equipment, CNC machine, plasma cutters, some manual machining, programming computers, shelving, et cetera. $200,000 to purchase the first parts of metal for us to be able to begin to do the machining, and $140,000 for two years of wages. It's going to be a unique person that can come in and interact with these people, provide training, interact with job shops, manage the job shops, get the material there on time and on quality. So a unique position. And we've received approximately $67,000 so far from two private donors. We have reached out to a variety of other places. John Deere is one of them. They have committed to do matching donations. They don't want to be the first person in, but they're willing to do matching donations. I think that's pretty normal. So, the big ask, the big ask is, we would really love to have $250,000 to go along with the $250,000 John Deere match, and the $67,000. That allows us to move forward, starting when we get the money this year, get that facility, white box, continue to generate the other money, and hopefully get this thing up and running in 2024. That would be our goal, and that's our target. So, I understand it's a big ask, but we just wanted to be honest. We shared why we need the money and what levels of money. And if you have any questions, let me know, and Dean and I would be glad to answer them.
You probably gave the address of the facility that you're looking at, or not? I was kind of curious.
We're located at 907 Independence Avenue, and the address is 909. The building is attached.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I had a question, as far as you talk about a high-success record, it looks like you have. Are there programs or are there any efforts made to those that are not successful to, you know, to help them or continue what has been, I guess, the work that's already been done?
Are you talking about in general?
Yes.
Yes, actually, we have multiple people that have come back to the program again. If they don't make it through Momentum, if they fall out, if something happens and they leave the program, we reach back out to them. We've had multiple that come back through a second time. The graduation and success rate of those that come back through a second time is 100% because they come back with a different level of commitment. They know the pain, they know the sweat and tears they put into this, and they always graduate when they come back through for that second time. So yes, we don't shut the door on anybody.
No. And it sounds like while you're doing the capital, the fundraising, you're still working on the program to help these individuals in every way you can until that's...
Absolutely.
Matter of fact, we've just started a peer support group. 15 post-graduates met, and they're getting together as peers just to support each other, to talk. They're always welcome back in. They have people that are, be there to counsel them in whatever way they need, and even help with some of the hurdles they have in life. It's a big part of the job, and...
It's a lifetime journey.
The people need that.
Sure.
You know, to say you're done and go, it doesn't work that way. They crash, and then bad results.
And that's a big reason for this upskilling center, is to continue that journey with people and support them longer term.
People ask us, "Why not just dump them into Hawkeye?" And we've actually met with Hawkeye, and Hawkeye's actually pretty excited about our program, because Hawkeye has an 18-week program very similar to this. We can't just dump them into Hawkeye. The goal would be, we get them to a certain place, and they might choose to go to Hawkeye and get the Hawkeye certificate, which really makes them mobile, because now they have the certificate. But that's one of the things they can stay and learn and be employable. If they were my son, I'm going to recommend, but go get the Hawkeye certificate as well, because that really makes... So we're trying to interact. They've shared their curriculum. We've laid out a similar curriculum. We're going to keep talking, and they're actually pretty excited about what we're doing.
How many folks do you hope to put through the center every year?
Four per session, so I'd say there's as many as eight. Again, we met with Hawkeye. They can hold 10. Right now, they have three or four per session that are joining. So our maximum that we can handle is a pretty realistic number, so that we can give them the one-on-one attention and give them the training they need.
So you can be a feeder for Hawkeye.
Feeder for Hawkeye and a feeder for all the local job shops. We've talked to local job shops, and they're pretty excited, because this talent is not readily available. And they become economically mobile, and the local job shops get people with talent.
And they're screaming for this talent right now.
Yeah, and have been for quite a while. Yeah.
All the way, local job shops, all the way up to John Deere.
I have some...
I've got a couple of questions. This is Tom Little. Does John Deere still have their training program with welding and machining?
I cannot speak to that.
I know at one time, they had the training where they were bringing people in, similar to what you're doing, welding classes and so forth. Are you a nonprofit, 501(c)(3)?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are.
Okay. And do you have a board of directors?
We do.
Could you send that list to the board members?
Yes.
How many people are you staff, I mean, really, considering as staff, working with these individuals?
Well, we're going to have the one person that's really targeted, and then there's going to be a bunch of volunteers. I can teach basic math. We have a guy that has 40 years of machining experience that's retired, that he can teach the print reading, and he can teach the measurement tool, volunteer. But we need that person to be able to manage the job shop, be out there with the people, make sure they're being safe, and making sure they're progressing and actually generating good parts, and that's going to be a paid position. So, right now, we're targeting the one paid position, and the rest will be volunteer.
Okay, thank you.
Have you seen if there's any grants out there from the state?
We have, researching those right now. We actually have somebody on our business development team that is actively writing grants for this as well.
Is it just strictly welding, or is it another skilled?
No, it's computer numerical controlled machining, so CNC machining, it's computer-controlled plasma cutting, and then it's also this 3D printing technician. Those are job skills that job shops need, so we're not actually going to do the welding. We may in the future, but that's not our target right now. So it's basically machining portion of it.
We have an area legislator in Amos, I think, Jerry Amos.
Yep.
And he was a trainer at John Deere's. He also was a trainer at Hawkeye Tech, teaching the same classes. He might be a good contact for you guys, not only on instruction when he's home, but maybe getting some kind of a grant or something from the state of Iowa.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you given this presentation to any other, like the Waterloos, the Cedar Falls?
We have not. This is our first.
Do you plan on it?
We would love to. We just need those connections.
We appreciate...
Yeah.
...you listening and welcoming us today.
I appreciate all the excellent work that you have been doing. I've been to the center, and it's just remarkable stuff you're doing.
Thank you.
You have a dialogue with John Deere, and you have a dialogue with Hawkeye.
Yes.
That's excellent. Basically, you've exposed us to four different programs: upscale, Momentum, the Ride Assistance Program, and the Peer Support Program, correct?
Yes.
Most of your clients have an addiction.
Yeah, more than 80%.
More than 80%.
Extended addiction, not just...
Opioid addictions?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the majority, majority are opioid addictions. Okay, because the point I'm making is, we have opioid funding that could potentially be used to support one of your programs. Now, I've been involved with this organization, aware of them for several years, and see the good they're doing in the community. We realize that in our community, that the challenges to get in a job are the transportation. I see that with some of my employees. They can't get to work. They've got to be to work at 10:00, they start walking at 8:30, and they're still late. One of their students in Momentum is actually the biological mother of a child we adopted, and she's excited to be in the program because she feels like it's preparing her emotionally and mentally to be a productive member of society again. Are you recruiting?
Recruiting for...
Any other programs? Let's say Momentum. How are you getting people into Momentum?
Mainly referrals from agencies, organizations. That's, the majority is referrals. Past graduates, people familiar, volunteers. We have 25 volunteer instructors that come in every term to facilitate classes, mainly referrals. We just had a referral for our next term from actually, from a psychologist, that is meeting with someone who said Momentum will make a big difference in their life.
It's a six-week course.
Yes.
Generally, how many students do you have?
12, max.
And you have to cap it?
Yes. The last two terms, we've had more than twice the number of people we can actually accept. So we're turning people away.
You work closely with the Department of Corrections?
Yes.
I'm shocked at the numbers you're showing with your transportation service. A record month, and you're still able to turn a profit.
Yeah.
You must not be paying your drivers very good.
Well, we're just trying to, we're really, it's a program of one city, so we're really, we're trying, it's a self-sufficient program. It supplies what it needs to continue, and that's really our goal, is to work ourselves out of it, don't need the program anymore. We want everybody to be able to get their license back, pay off their fines, and be able to become self-sufficient, self-reliant.
Would it be viable for you to maybe potentially, as another source of transportation, check in with Met Transit for bus service?
We have had conversations with Met. Hasn't turned into anything yet, but we continue the conversation.
To not lose money, we have to be a little cautious, the onesies and twosies from way south to way north or east or west. So we have to be a little careful how we provide the service. We like to think of it as a shuttle, where we have at least two or three people in the vehicle, because if we're doing one here and one there and one here, not only can we not transport people, we won't survive. So we do have to turn some people away, not many, but some people away, but we're still...
Logistics.
Yeah. We don't like that, and the person running our program doesn't like that, but he's learning that's part of the business. If we're going to be successful and serve the people we're serving well, we have to be able to do that.
Well, I applaud your efforts, and I certainly would like to find a way for us as a board to assist you in your endeavor, because I think this is important for the community.
Yeah, I like where you're going with the opioid dollars. That would seem to make, those dollars make a ton of sense here. Question on you guys' timeline. So, the ask is for $250,000. When do you, ideally, when would you like to know?
As soon as possible, because we've got a bid with Cardinal already, and they're asking how it's going. They gave it to us some last year, and we started this process. They're ready to begin. It's about a six-to-eight-month journey to get it updated in their schedule. We want to continue to pursue this other money, but if we could get that by January, February, the facility running, and have the money then to populate the machines and things like that, we could actually begin this first upskill session, first quarter and a first quarter, first, second quarter of 2024.
When is John Deere's going to match than what you get?
Yes.
They're generally not that, I mean, they're cautious in their funding.
That's why they don't want to be first.
Yeah.
I say we call their bluff.
We would appreciate that.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes there have been businesses too. I was going to say, Deere may be included in that group, that have donated equipment and machinery.
Yes.
I guess I would assume maybe there'd be some businesses because they see the need that they all have and...
Yes.
Could take advantage of that to help set up the...
Yes, and that second part of the money, we may be able to pare that down by getting some of those, you know, in-kind donations rather than just cash. So we're going to pursue.
Combination.
Some of the initial equipment we get is manual machines. We can buy used machines. We can buy three or four of those for $20,000, so we're going to start that way. But when you start getting into the computer-controlled machines and laser cutting, they get to be pretty big, and if you're gonna generate parts off them for job shops, you can't use just the little training modules. You actually have to have the machine that cuts. But we're gonna investigate everything we can to save money.
Yeah, well, I think with the track record you started and everything, there'd be, yeah, a lot of interest, I would think, from this as a community, so that'd be great. Yeah.
Well, again, the Charlies of the world now is an impact Charlie. Charlie's got five kids, and the impact to his partner, the impact to his five children, just the impact into the future is huge. So, that's, that's the positive and exciting part about this.
I would've brought Charlie with me today, but he's working.
And we have other Charlies, we have Roberts, and we have all this pretty exciting stories.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you've sent your presentation, so I know we can distribute it to all of us too, so thank you. Yep, thank you. Is your contact information on there as well, on the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, materials? Thank you. Item five, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Morning, Board, Ryan Brennan, Assistant County Engineer.
Morning.
Currently, we do have some construction projects going on. Our construction on the Pointer Road Bridge continues this week as well. We're also doing some guard rail replacements and repairs this week. And then, lastly, as Michelle had noted, we are hauling a lot of mile rock lately and doing a lot of blading on our granular roads.
The weather is acting weird. There's gotta be wrecking havoc on the roads.
We did have a few plows out yesterday, but not for very long, obviously.
Thursday, I was complaining my air conditioning wasn't working good enough. This morning, I was scraping the frost off my windshield.
And famous saying is, dial, all right? Anyone else? Is there anyone else that would like to speak on an update? Thank you.
All right, just a couple of reminders. So, Wednesday and Thursday, we have our medical plan administration presentations, and the RFP team will be turning around a recommendation pretty quick to the board. I have put a placeholder, communicated that to Debbie a few weeks ago, to put a placeholder on next week's agenda to award that contract so that we can begin the implementation phase, because we need to have this all wrapped up by July first. So, Stacy will be here next week. Reminder, I'm gonna be gone in Louisville for that national conference, so I'm gonna plan to attend remotely for the next week's board meeting, but primarily, it'll be Stacy here to present that information. Cherry will also be up here in my place, so, yeah, looking forward to getting through the month of April.
Thank you. Is there anyone else with an update in the room? Anyone on Zoom that would like to update the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to item six, minutes approved for April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, minutes are approved. Item seven is the hearings. We have two hearings later this morning. One is a rezoned request by Lisa Johnson, another is a conditions amendment request by Ahava Acres. Consent agenda, the following items are acted upon by a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
If there's nothing anyone wishes to discuss, please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item number nine, other business. A motion to approve release of the request for proposal to create a new Blackhawk County logo slash brand.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion.
I'll pass this around. From what we had discussed previously, the timeline, uh, just adjusting the timeline.
You've got one?
Yep, yep. So, this just adjusts, this just adjusts, adjusts the timeline to give us a little bit more leeway. So, would distribute the proposal April eighteenth and have a full month out before that deadline. Have the, have a committee review, and choose three to interview. Bring that, that recommendation to the board in early June. Have the board vote mid-June, and notify the awarded contract middle of June, and then that design work would start, and I'll get you this, I'll get you this grant for minutes. The start date would be June nineteenth for the design work, couple of different rounds and phases with various input, and hopefully have design back to the board by August fifteenth.
Great, super. As you know, and we've commented in the meetings, I guess, I was, I know it was a very condensed timeline, and I was just concerned that maybe we were overloading staff a little bit because of the turnaround time that you had such an aggressive plan, and I knew why.
Yep.
And also that maybe we would not get the response too from maybe as many vendors as we had if I shorten it too. So, thank you, I appreciate that, and not even having to discuss it today. I still had a couple of questions I wanted to ask, that you mentioned, and this is just clarification for me, that, and the line that you've designed now probably with more time probably makes this almost go away, but it was like, one of the items on the contract dates, you listed other, designed to gather input from members of the board of supervisors, this, the committee, or I think the group that selected will be doing that, the marketing committee, and other interested staff and members of the public. And I wondered if you had some in mind, or what, I know you've worked through the process before, and I just thought too, if there was, how that's usually done, or how we select members of the public, or is that open for discussion later?
Okay, I mean, we can, we can discuss it now or discuss it later. That's probably a little trigger one, and frankly, what I've had to do in the past. I think the easiest way would just to be to have folks meet here and have it open, and if members of the public wanted to attend, by all means, provide some input.
Great. And I know, yesterday, I was maybe talking with Michelle or Debbie, I said about it too, you know, we've talked about supervisors being involved and those that want to, or I mentioned, I think it was with Dan, and said anytime that a supervisor would want to sit in on that, we'd just have to post, you know, the notice of it so everybody could see or hear. I think that might be a benefit, so I didn't, Chris, I know you were very willing to say the two of us could work on it, but anybody, Tom as well too, if there's a Zoom that you'd like to attend one of those meetings too, we can do it that way as well.
Sounds good.
Okay, that was great. So, thanks. The other is, just like I say, working through it through the office, and here was a question I had for you. Typically, I think I said we would supply, the people that provided response to us would respond to all the supervisors, so we'd see that comes through. And my question really was, normally, we'd also have the administrative aide kind of in that chain, and we still can do that, but because of Debbie leaving us kind of mid-process in all this, I wondered if it would be better to just include Michelle, kind of as a, so someone we could keep on track with from inside the staff too, if all of us would.
I'm always happy to add more stuff to Michelle's plate.
I know, I didn't want to do that. But I, what I was afraid of is that we, once Debbie left, then it'd be confusing to say to everybody, now we want you to change midway, but I just, I don't know. Thoughts on that? Dan, anybody? Okay, we're good with that?
That sounds good.
Great. No, I think that was, it was really, yeah, those were all my issues in the timeline. Like I said, thank you very much for reconsidering, but that was all, I just didn't want to, I wanted to be inclusive of everybody could. We're kind of a community rich with marketing organizations on the one side, and I thought so, I'm hoping we get a lot of interest, that would be great. Secondly, I thought too, it was like staff turnaround. If we got a lot of proposals, I think you had a three-day turnaround, and I was like, okay, review.
Yep.
If we only had a couple, we're good, but if we had more, so, thanks. So, if we can get this out today or tomorrow, oh, this would probably be, how would you select, or how would you determine we should probably, the best way for us to drop this, to contact organizations or kind of come up with a list?
Probably, probably the contact orgs. I know that L had said that we could put it on the site.
We can do website, yeah, obviously.
That's one place for it.
We can do some social media, but you know, that's not something we utilize a lot.
Yeah.
But I just thought to get it out there and quickly, and so we should probably do more direct.
Certainly direct.
Do you think we have a, do we have a list of those organizations, or should we just? I, I got some off the top of my head.
Yeah, I know, I know I can come up with some, but.
Same way.
Me too, okay. I think as long as we sort of, if we, if we post it on the site, we're fulfilling our requirement, and then if we can individually ensure that it gets out to folks that we might suspect have some interest.
Yeah. Okay, great, because I just thought, yeah, the more we could probably reach out to, and at least make them aware of it. Super. Okay, thanks, we'll do that then and get that done. So, it's been motion and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And motion is approved. Item B, discussion and possible board action. To discuss the Blackhawk County Solid Waste Management Commission bonding needs for fiscal year twenty-four, including a commitment to support the issuance of general obligation bonds not to exceed four million eight hundred thousand dollars on behalf of the Solid Waste Management Commission, with all costs to be repaid by the Solid Waste Management Commission. John, your floor.
Good morning, and thank you very much for allowing me to present today and make this request. My name's John Foster, I'm the administrator of the Blackhawk County Solid Waste Management Commission. We're an intergovernmental entity established in nineteen seventy-four to meet the solid waste needs for Blackhawk County. We are overseen by a board of commissioners with Tom, Tom Little is your representative onto that committee. We have two representatives from the city of Waterloo, one from the city of Cedar Falls, and one small-town representative to kind of help guide the system as we go through. The commission is funding this through, solely through its fees it collects. It does not collect any taxpayer, any taxpayer fees or per capita fees. The activities we do, obviously, we operate, we oversee the operation of the landfill. We have a, we're unique to where we actually privately contract out the operation, but we oversee the operations and the development of that facility, which kind of leads me to the part that I'm here to ask for today. Back in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, you guys have supported us in a previous bond issuance for our SLW three landfill expansion project. It was just shy of ten million dollars on those two bonds. We're getting ready to start our W three Phase Two project, which is gonna be a four-point-five-million-dollar project. Give or take a little bit of extra change in there as we kind of get some additional prices going through and kind of continuing with our, our policy of bonding for future development. We are here to ask for your support for that. While we're asking for four-point-eight million dollars, of that four-point-five will be utilized for the project itself. So, it will be used for a construction project, no land purchases or any other items on that. We try to pull those out of our reserve funds that we have. The extra three million, the point three, the point three, three hundred thousand, I guess, within the request is including the, the bondage fees, which would be about one, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then also with any kind of bond premium that would be in there. So, we would have, in case there's a bond premium, gives us a little bit extra wiggle room within that, within that amount. So, I, really, we don't want to go over that four-point-five with those added costs that are on there. We've already talked, we, we've already had discussions between, Michelle, we, we know as well as your bond counsel, or bond counsel, as well as your financial advisor at Spear Financial. If this project, if you, if you're willing to consider this bond request, we've already kind of put together a draft schedule for you. The only difference kind of out of our normal process for bonding is that we have a twenty-eighty agreement that's between the board of supervisors as well as the commission. It's a revenue sharing agreement, because really what we're doing is borrowing money from the county, and then the county is issuing those bonds. And so, that, that agreement outlines what our terms are for, for the establishment of that. Once that agreement's set, then at that point, we'll follow the normal bond process of setting a public hearing, going through the adoption of the official statement. Michelle, we're gonna go through our first ratings call with Moody's here, so she gets to kind of understand exactly how it works on the, on the county side through the bonding. And we're looking at having the bond sale after July first. Right now, we're looking at probably July eleventh. That way, it doesn't impact this fiscal year, and then we'd end up receiving the funds in August. The one thing I do want to make clear is that we ended up going out for bid for this project. We wanted to make sure it was on the calendar for a construction project that we, through competitive bids. PCI was awarded this project at an amazing price, it was three-point-seven million dollars. Next one up was three-point-nine, and then after that, it was like four, four-three or something like that. The engineer estimate on this was four, little over four-six. So, I was really surprised about this project. The SLW three Phase Two project is, as I said, is the second part of our W three phase. The first phase was only gonna last us about three years. This phase right here allows us to incorporate another twenty-one acres and abutment liner, and we have about a hundred and sixty-one thousand cubic yards that we're moving. With that, it's gonna give us probably about another ten to twelve years of airspace, very conservative at that point, before we have to construct another landfill cell. In the memo I provided, one of the, one of the strategies that we have right now is that we know the twenty-nineteen bond is coming due in this, next year, so we'll be able to retire that bond, and by the time that bond is retired, we'll just continue those payments back to the county for the servicing of this next bond. We're looking at five years, so that way, both this bond as well as the twenty-twenty bond will be retired in twenty-twenty-nine. And then if you look on the, on the memo that I provided, we're looking for our cell development of W four Phase One in roughly October of twenty thirty, or, excuse me, twenty thirty. And so, at that point, we'd probably come back and ask for another five million dollars for that project as well. Are there any questions?
What year was that, John?
Twenty thirty.
Twenty thirty.
So, it'd be somewhere in that, twenty thirty.
I'll put it on my calendar.
Twenty thirty-one, fiscal year twenty thirty-one, so. A little ways down the road, but definitely I could keep, kind of keep everybody prepared where we're at.
Oh, thank you.
Michelle, you're all up to speed on this?
Works through it with our bond counsel and with Spear, and we should be ready to go.
That timeline works and everything too.
Yes, yeah, we work together on that. It's probably a little slower than John would have liked, but, you know, it works well for the rest of us.
And that's one point I do want to make, is that we've already, I meant to continue on that. We already awarded the project, so we're gonna start having payments already out for the project as well as we've already started accumulating materials. Unfortunately, the tire, we use tire-derived aggregates, so it's all tires that get ground up, and we use that as kind of our drainage layer and cushion layer for our landfill liner system. Unfortunately, with, it's over a million some tires that are all ground up, so it's gonna take about eighteen months for us to get it. Because we accelerate our schedule, we're not able to get all that within this construction season, so we're gonna have, we've already started the deliveries of the, of the tires, so that'll be part of that owner-supplied materials that wasn't included in that three-point-seven, three-point-seven that I had talked about earlier. So, as we're going, we're not gonna receive the money till August, so I want to make sure that we're, everybody's understanding that the commission's gonna have expenditures for this project prior, so once the bond is, is issued, we're gonna make an immediate request on, for those expenditures that were cash flowing between now and then.
Are there any questions for John?
No.
Tom, do you have any questions or anything?
Michelle, as far as the, our auditor that does auditing for the county, is there any kind of additional charges? Because I know they have to deal with the bonds, whether it be county or in this case, solid waste. Is there any more cost to the county?
I don't think they would have a separate charge for that. You're correct that they do have to audit that, so there is some work that we have to prepare for them, and they will look at it, but I, I, I'm not aware that it would impact the fees. And they are staying below five million, so that relieves us from the arbitrage testing, which is always a good thing. So, we're, we're trying to reduce the cost as much as we can, I guess.
And typically, there's nothing we're doing with this one that's any different than what we have previously.
No.
Same process, nothing new.
Right, they'll sign a twenty-eighty with us, you know, to ensure that they're gonna pay for it, because we don't, we aren't going to pay. While it runs through our books, the ultimate cash to repay it comes from the Solid Waste Commission.
So you, so you see no cost whatsoever to the board, or to the county?
Only in terms of probably staff time, myself, you know, for doing the bond rating call and organizing the documents, and then, of course, when we process payments, that takes some staff time from the auditors and the treasurers as well, but that would, that would be all. It's just time more than hard costs, I guess I would say.
Has there any been consideration of, you know, the admin fees and everything else is covered in this as well? Has there been ever an ask for admin from staff standpoint? I know like other organizations do sometimes, just asking the question, that either one of you know maybe from reimbursing staff or staff time?
If it's a point of the county, we can consider it. Again, negotiations for, for moving forward.
Why don't we try to track that, Michelle, and see if we can come up with, how much time is actually spent on that?
Okay, I can do that.
So, we can do that, but we can still move forward with the action for today if everybody?
I think so.
Everyone, okay? So, I'm assuming we would have some type of a resolution that would be supporting the issuance of general obligation bonds not to exceed four-point-eight million on behalf of Solid Waste Commission, with all costs to be repaid by the Solid Waste Commission? Is that sufficient for everybody? And you?
We thought that was adequate for today. We will, you will have, we wanted to get this on the books today, and then we will be setting a data hearing, and there'll be an actual hearing that you'll, you'll need to approve as well. And then a bond sale in July, and there's several steps we have to go through.
And Grant, maybe tack on to that for fiscal year twenty-four? I didn't, sorry. All right.
We just wanted to make sure everybody was on board before we started committing resources.
No, appreciate it.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded?
I'm sorry, who moved it?
You seconded?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was seconding Linda's.
What I did, yeah. Davis, well, yeah, whoever you want.
Sure.
That's great, thank you, Grant. So, it's been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
I'm gonna abstain due to the fact that I serve on the Solid Waste Commission.
Layland?
Yes. Item C, motion to approve the monthly Cobra health insurance rates and coverage effective July first, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments to be made? I think we received the email from Tim, so, all right, just general action. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item D, motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing bid opening to be held at nine oh five on May ninth at the Blackhawk County Courthouse on the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four crack ceiling in various locations throughout Blackhawk County.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Mr. Brennan?
These are, these next few items are routine maintenance projects for the summer. Obviously, this one being our crack filling, crack sealing project. So, all of these will start after July first, and are just budgeted for FY twenty-four.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item E, motion to direct the county auditor, auditor to advertise for a public hearing bid opening to be held at 9:07 on May 9 at the Blackhawk County Courthouse on the proposed fiscal year 24 seal coating in various locations throughout Blackhawk County.
So moved.
Second.
There is no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item F, motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing bid opening to be held at 9:09 on May 9 in the boardroom of the Blackhawk County Courthouse on the proposed Ridgeway Avenue HMA resurfacing project, LFM 5025-7X-07, and Main Road and Mount Auburn Road HMA resurfacing project, LFM 5034-7X-07 in Blackhawk County.
So moved.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item G, resolution that the applications for property tax exemption under authority of the Iowa Property Tax Natural Resources Exemption and Assessment Law, including open prairie and wildlife habitat pursuant to 427.1 Code of Iowa, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by TJ Feld, Blackhawk County Assessor.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. I think we all saw the email, unless there's, okay, questions, he may be online. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Tralka?
Yes.
All?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Aiden?
Yes. Item H, discussion on the jail healthcare services and RFP process. So sheriff is here to update us, I think, or provide some information. I think I'm just what's transpired since we last talked about this. I think it was in January.
Morning.
Morning.
So as I indicated in the email correspondence, we've had one meeting. In fact, I wasn't aware until your email, Linda, that we had added Michelle. That's a good idea. I didn't realize she was added to that subcommittee, but we're certainly willing to add her as well. We have met with a company that's relatively new to the scene. This is a, kind of a unique niche market to provide mental and medical healthcare for corrections in the state of Iowa. In fact, the company that provided for maybe an eighth of the jails in the state, Mend is the name, just went bankrupt. And they provided the closest, I think, is Harden County, as we were looking into possible other groups to reach out to. They're off the list because they're no longer in service. So, but we reached out to this new company just to kind of get a feel for what they're all about. They started off their business in mental healthcare, working with other regions in the state, providing both telehealth or telepsych and on premise mental health care, and are now starting to dip their toe in the water for full fledged mental health care services. We arranged that meeting both to understand what their offerings looked like, but also let the Board of Supervisor participants understand the amount of depth and necessity of those conversations when we kind of vet a company. And, and I think some of our questions even took the company by surprise and, and caused them to go back and do some research as well. So that was the first meeting that we've had, and we've not had one since. Although I have reached out to pursuant to Supervisor Schwartz's request, I have reached out to Peoples Clinic. To my surprise, they did not flat out say no right away, like Caitlin, I think she's on, like the Health Department did. And, and the Health Department's response was merely that it, it doesn't meet some of their priority goals. Other than serving underserved markets, it doesn't really meet with their mission at this point in time. But she did agree to help us in trying to crack that cookie and, and take a look at models and what's going on other places. She specifically reached out to Scott County and sent an email early this morning that I will forward to you all to take a look at what Scott County is doing. They're at about 1.5 million, not including some additional mental health and pharmaceuticals and, and some of those. So that kind of puts them right up there with, similar to what we are, what we are paying. Their jail's a little bit larger for head or bed space than ours, but they're keeping their healthcare internal with, using the Scott County Health Department as theirs. They also have a, a letter kind of outlining their model from, from a local doctor or someone affiliated with the Health Department that I'll share with you as well later today. So you can kind of see an apples to apples of what that looks like as far as a, a local option, though with the Health Department not being a real avid advocate for an option for us to move towards, if Peoples doesn't come forward with another solution that we can put the subcommittee against, then we really are kind of to the point where I think at, at this juncture, we really need to start talking about RFPing. And if we are talking about an RFP, then we're back to that original conversation about if we're going to vet an RFP, we would request consideration of consultancy, that we don't misstep what is logically probably one of our most libelous areas of the jail. It's certainly where we get sued the most, medical and mental health care. So.
What is the size of Polk County beds? How many do they have compared to us?
Polk?
Or the one that you meant?
Scott.
Was it Polk?
Scott County, no, Scott County's a little over 300.
Okay.
Polk County's over 1,000. But Scott County is who's using their public health. Polk County actually uses the same company we use right now, NAF Care.
Do we know about other counties our size? Like they say, that probably the four or five have jails, I assume, and who that, who does their service?
Yeah, well, yeah. Scott County, so I, I was under the assumption or under the understanding that Lynn County was actually using public health. And Caitlin came from Lynn County, and she assures me that is not the case. So I have to go back and do some more research on that, because that was my understanding from a sergeant that actually worked in the jail that was on the ISSDA board. So I have to go back and do some research on that. Potawatomi County, they would be similar in size, and they currently, I actually have these feelers out, and I have printed off their responses. They actually use public health, but they have kind of a niche solution whereby they fund the staff internally, and then public health administrates. Woodbury County has a contract with ACH, Correctional Healthcare, American Correctional Healthcare.
I can't think of it. What's the A stand for?
Advanced, Advanced Correctional Healthcare. So again, some of the assertions that I had before, as we reached out to similar sizes, most of them are contracted, so. And most of them have similar issues. When I, when I reached out originally a couple months ago, most of them are seeing the same increases in costs. But really, since this is discussion only, i- if, if the direction is pursue an RFP, keep in mind the timing. Because again, we're asking for consultancy. That's a, probably a three month process to get a consultant onboard. And then development of an RFP is another two to three months. And then vetting of the RFP is another two to three months. So you're right back into that year's been expensed, you know, at that point as well. So, so we really are at the point where the timing is right to, to have a conversation of where do we go from here.
Did Peoples Health Clinic give you any type of timeline? I mean,
They were reaching out to other similarly situated community health clinics around that they have partnerships with or, or relationships with. I don't know how long that research is going to take them. Certainly, we're not their priority. But I have a great working relationship with them since the pandemic, and, and they were, I suspect, more than willing to entertain it more based on that relationship than based on the pragmatism of whether or not they should, or it was financially viable for them to do this. So regardless, I kept them onboard as a, an advocate, as a, as a consultant, as a, a, a community oriented focus group that we can bounce ideas off of and, and keep them engaged through the process for those purposes as well, as well as we are with public health and Caitlin and her staff. So.
I just thought because of that quick timeline that we do have, that they'd have to have some things fall really tightly in place for us to go forward with them or have that confidence that we could do that, or have that discussion. So, no, good to have those discussions.
Yeah. What other questions can I answer for you?
When we talk about the RFP, did we RFP, use RFP process before? Back with NAF Care?
We did. Back in, I, I originally tried to do it back in 2009, was held off until 2010. When we did it originally in 2010, we brought in several community focused folks to help facilitate that, and it was a cluster. But we ended up keeping the same company that we had. What that did was put us into 24/7 operations. And that process took us almost six months. Originally in 95, when the jail opened, we started with the company that we still have now. The, the familiarity that I have was when we went in 2010 to RFP the 24/7. So I can't speak to what we did in 95 or earlier when we RFP'd to actually open the facility. I wasn't working on the jail medical contract at that time.
I was just wondering if there was something we utilized that would be helpful for some of us.
We've got a template. We've got a template. It is well outdated, and it wouldn't be one that I would highly recommend using as a template. But there certainly are templates, and we could reach out to, to other partners. Polk County just, just did this, certainly on a much higher level than ours with a 10, with a 1,000 bed jail. And they ended up with NAF Care as their consultant. They have full-time counsel at the sheriff's office down there. I've got a good working relationship with him and with the sheriff there that we could certainly utilize some of their resources and some of their documents. But again, the concern isn't so much the documentation itself, it's the process to make sure that when we're adding all of these components together, that we don't misstep or miswrite the document to ensure that what we are in fact getting, and I've seen this in the radio project that we just completed, the, that would be for the land mobile radio for the countywide, that would be for the software project that we're currently doing, public safety software project for 18 law enforcement, fire, and EMS agencies. The devil is in the details. And so that misstep then is accountable for the next 20 to 30 years, right? I don't, and we've openly admitted from the beginning, we're cops, we're not medical folks. And so we're just kind of unwilling to accept the amount of liability associated with misstepping something within an RFP that we just know that there are consultants out there that do this routinely that wouldn't, wouldn't miss something that we often probably or likely could.
I don't suppose we have an estimate probably of the cost of that, but I'd.
I have no idea.
Yeah.
Never, never delved into that area before.
I would like to learn a little bit more about Potawatomi County. It sounds like the Health Department is just providing administrative.
That's my understanding. I think their nursing staff is their own staff, and then the Health Department provides administrative. But I can reach out to Sheriff Brown and, and get more details from him.
Are there other questions or discussion? I was going to say comments or interest of whether it's about the RFP process or?
Well, we're getting down to the wire again. My biggest fear, I view my responsibility, and I'm, I'm a taxpayer sitting on the board. And I'm always worried about sustainability. And, you know, with the cost increasing as much as they're increasing, what services is we as a board willing to give up? Because none of us are willing to increase our taxes 10% annually. And there's so many moving parts with all we have to consider in our budget. And we take the heat for tax increases. I mean, the valuations on properties, there, we have little to no involvement in that. And we heard it. We heard it. And we tried to educate people, but still. I even saw Facebook posts where people were putting it on our backs.
Yeah, that's true. They did play us. Yes.
So, you know, of cost containment, sustainability, you have said for years, I'm willing to raise taxes minimally every year, but minimally. And we have other entities to be concerned about. We have some municipalities in our county that are going to be facing some financial difficulties as we progress. And, you know, it's a hungry machine and.
During my tenure as sheriff, we've been successfully sued one time for a medical issue. And you now have opaque windows in the jail because of that successful lawsuit. But beyond that one successful lawsuit, that settlement pales by comparison to the annual cost of increase of a jail medical mental health cost. So keep in mind that when you start talking about medical and mental health care in a correctional facility, it's one of the things that we must provide. And the amount of liability with your cheese in the breeze, so to speak, it's expensive. It's costly no matter what we do. So the concern is certainly sustainability, but the concern is also liability. And so how we balance and how we walk that tightrope is a long-term concern. And it's one that, when it comes down to fiscal responsibility, we get it. And I'm, I'm certainly not telling you that NAF Care is the biggest, the best, the whatever. That's not at all. You've never heard me stand up and say, please stay with NAF Care. That's why I brought the president or the CEO of the company in to defend his own percentage increases. You didn't hear that from me. I was just the bearer of bad news. At the end of the day, we've got to do what's fiscally responsible and what's right for our county and our citizens. But at the end of the day, I also know that if we do this half step, if we do this wrong, and we get sued one time, one time a year, you're going to rue the day that you didn't do it right. And you make the wrong decision. So.
I just know that, like Dan said, the reality is, we can't sustain this cost. And again, there's no guarantees that NAF Care ain't going to throw another 35 plus percent at us next year or the year after. And each time they do that, that's on top of 1.4, 1.6 million dollars.
Right.
So I, I think we've got to turn over every rock. We have to do something because we can't sustain this cost. It, it's getting out of control.
Yeah.
And now's the time to, to come up. And I don't know about the contract. We got what a year, if we can extend it six months if we have to, but we need the time to do it right. But I, we've got to do something.
I think, and, and I think we're probably in good shape with them as a partner. I think if you renegotiate another year extension, you're probably okay there. I'm not suggesting that you do that. But again, when we look at the timing, I think you're probably good, even if you had to extend another six months on top of what you've already got for an extension, you're probably okay to do that as well. Even if we went to month by month payments, you're probably okay to do that as well. This is a, a pretty congenial company to work with. But to the, to, to your point of turning over every rock, we're willing to turn over every rock. We're certainly not advocating for NAF Care over any other company. We're certainly willing to pursue any avenue the board wants to pursue. And where, where we're going to start getting And where, where we're gonna start getting a little cautious is, is when we start cutting corners, or start looking for half-step measures that we know are gonna put us in a greater liability position, because again, we've been there before, and we recognize that having enjoyed 15 years of, of minimal, if, if any lawsuits out of the medical, which is the most liablest part of correctional services, we've been advantageously benefited by all of that, so.
You said, Tony, that the other counties that are using NAFCARE also received an increase similar to what Blackhawk County did?
I, I think just about everybody across the board, and, and I can, I can go back and produce those emails from all those other similar-sized counties. There are very few similar-sized counties to us, obviously. The big five, you know, are, are about the only ones. I know Polk County got a, they just contracted with NAFCARE and turned around and got a 25%, I believe, something like that, percent increase. But most every sheriff that we talked to are getting the same thing, and that's the, the one thing that I caution myself to. I don't know that every year we're gonna see 20 to 30% increases from here on out. I think the pandemic, and I think several other factors factored into this, this contractual increase this time, and maybe we do settle back into a 3% to 5% after that, and things calm back down. I hope they do. We're not seeing a lot of stability in the, in the nursing market yet, but I just can't imagine that the market will continue to bear some of the costings that, that medical services are currently demonstrating. So I, I think we're, we're feeling that currently, but I can't, you know, I, again, I'm not a, I'm not a forecaster in those kinds of situations, but I, I just can't imagine that this will continue in the long term. But certainly, other sheriffs are experiencing similar concerns, regardless of the, of the medical provider, they're, they're all experiencing similar increases. So there's not one out there providing huge discounted services. They're all experiencing the same kinds of increases.
Well, it's, it's my opinion, and I don't, I'm not asking anybody to agree with me, but in all honesty, I never accepted half of their excuses. It didn't make sense to me, the reasoning that they were giving us this increase. Some of them was ridiculous, in my opinion. It was the price of doing business, and everybody else around this country and state had to do the same thing.
You'll not get any disagreement from me.
So am I correct, in, you mentioned the emails that you have, they would have the information on what the other counties maybe have, the jail numbers that they have, who they have as their healthcare provider, and what they're paying?
I can, yeah, I can get that for you.
I just think that would be helpful for us.
Yeah.
The fact if they've used a consultant, I guess what those costs might be would be helpful.
That may be a little more difficult for me, because I don't know their processes, but, but I, I'll certainly inquire. I mean, we're all pretty freely sharing information back and forth as, as far as who's where and, and what everybody's experiencing right now, so, yeah, I'll reach back out and I'll ask those kind of specific point-by-point questions.
Thank you. I just thought we could ask Michelle to do it, but I thought you with the relationships.
Absolutely.
That would be good, because I think that would be helpful. Comment, I know the two of you, you've had some meetings or other meetings with them.
I mean, I think the People's Clinic is a perfect example of how it might be on our timeline, it might not be on their timeline, and so to expect them to be able to make a decision as soon as we want it is, is really unlikely.
And keep in mind, they're under a huge construction project right now, too. I think we should just move our jail into their building.
So I do think, I've always sort of been of the assumption that the January deadline was, was just too soon if we were going to look at different methods to provide this service. And if, even if we aren't gonna look at maybe different methods, if we're still gonna go with, with a true private entity, then we have to determine the level of, of service, Dan has, has indicated that both publicly and privately. So I don't think it's a thing that we wanna, frankly, we don't have ask care. These folks are in our custody, and it's our responsibility, and it's safer for staff as well. When folks have their needs, their, their health needs met, and are stable, it is health is, is much safer for staff. And I think that's incredibly important for us to keep in mind when we are weighing, if we want to scale back on one portion of service versus another. So I'm comfortable with, with extending current contracts, you know, a, a short time to allow for us to continue to have those conversations with peoples, maybe some, I don't know if health is gonna be there, but it sounds like they're getting closer in their process to naming a director, which, you know, bringing this on a, on a health department without leadership, you know, long-term leadership would be really difficult. And so, yeah.
Well, I think the conversations can continue regardless. I said, going forward, if there are some interest from those parties, I guess, in other years, too, I said, this has been an ongoing process, and you've got relationships you've had with these individuals, too, for years. It's just maybe finally saw a door open a little bit for someone interested in, assuming we don't know to what level.
I do want to echo, because I did, I did feel like from the start, the process that it was, we weren't allowing enough time to really explore alternative options. We were pretty much only giving enough time to turn around and do another RFP. But I do think that this, that, that we really should take this opportunity to fully explore these other options, and whether that means a six-month extension or something like that to give us that time, rather than continue to, to explore these options as we've entered into another contract already. So it's, I really do want to see us take a, a serious, hard look at what Potawatomi and Scott counties are doing.
I think so as well. I mean, that we want to take a look at those things. I think it was the direction of the board, however, though, at the time that we took that action in January. Not that anyone can't change their opinions or thoughts, and whether it's for extensions or what we do differently, but the board did vote that we would do the two, consider the healthcare options, as well as do the RFP kind of simultaneously, and continue down that road. And I think that was-
And again, that was not my recollection, that, that I was directed to, to build an RFP.
Yeah, I don't, I don't-
I didn't ask you to, no, it wasn't. I was gonna say, and I did look it up, because I didn't want to be mixing apples and oranges. But, and I was gonna mention to you, when you mentioned about Michelle being, you didn't know she was supposed to be on. It was at the January 31st meeting that the board had, and the motion was made by Schwartz and seconded by Hall to appoint Supervisor Hall, Supervisor Schwartz, and Finance Director Michelle Wiener to a committee with Sheriff Thompson to study long-term healthcare plans, only for that, not that he had to develop it, and to start the planning process for a request for proposal for healthcare services for the jail, as the current contract for services will expire January 31st.
I may not have been at that meeting.
It, let me finish. It says, Thompson said, if the committee is going to explore an RFP, as well as a local partnership, it would need to consider both simultaneously. He thought they could complete their work before July, motion carried.
Who said that?
The comment was you, Sheriff Thompson.
That I thought we could get this done by July?
Well, the, the comment was, yes, Thompson, Sheriff Thompson, said if the committee's going to explore an RFP, because we did talk about both options, as well as the local partnership, they would need to consider both simultaneously. He thought they could complete their work before July. And I know that was just, not that, not that everything would be decided by July, Tony, but it would be some of that process you defined earlier, that we have that process in place.
Maybe drunk at that meeting, I don't know.
I just, I wasn't sure I remembered right either, so I wanted to recall, because I just thought, too, when there'd been some meetings and Michelle hadn't been included, I was gonna reach out to you and just say, was there a reason or something that you were doing that, you know, didn't require her attendance, but, so that was all. It was just kind of that we'd look at exploring, not that you were directed to do the RFP at the same time, just that we were looking at those options, as well as thinking about planning ahead.
Yeah.
So we still need to be doing both, probably, but-
Well, I'm a little stuck, because if I'm going to develop plans for an RFP, how am I to do that if I'm not, am I working with a consultant, or am I not?
That's definitely, when you said you wanted board discussion, possible board action, or today, I thought we had more discussion to have. Otherwise, I was happy to put that on for what the board wants to do for a following week, if that's the direction you're waiting for from us to do that, or if we want to use a consultant, or whatever. It just sounded like there were various options we needed to be aware of and apprised of. I thought, you know, like I said, the things you said you're gonna provide in email, some of the costs, some of the plans that others have used, that type of thing, information for us before we made the decision. That was all. Does that not seem like a good plan, that we just get a little more information before we say to you, please get the process in place for an RFP?
I, I'll, I'll provide you whatever you need. I will send out those emails. I'll, I'll shoot you what Scott County provided to Caitlin. I'll get that to you today. And I will forward whatever email responses I get from the other larger counties as soon as I get those. Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. And you've been doing, like I say, a lot of work and things, putting these things in place and meeting with people already, so that, that's been helpful. I appreciated the email you sent on that. That was informative, but, so that we can take some action, or need to get something going on, at least how we proceed.
Mm-hmm.
Sounds like we need to do that. So thank you, I appreciate that. Is there any questions, comments, anything further, I guess, and Tony, any from you? Well, thank you for coming for the discussion today.
You bet.
Item I, and it is 1021. The hearing on proposed ordinance number 77-278 Johnson rezone. There's a motion to receive and place on file proof of publication of notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to waive the first reading as notice was published on April 10th, 2023, in the Waterloo Courier, in accordance with requirements of the Code of Iowa, and publication was approved on the request submitted by Lisa Johnson to rezone 1.5 acres from AAG District to AR Agricultural Residential District, in order to construct one new single-family home at east of 5405 Miller Creek Road.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Motion to close the hearing as oral and written comments were received and placed on file.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, were there any written comments, Mr.?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Seth?
Okay, all right. At the Planning and Zoning Commission at the regular meeting on March 21st, 2023, reviewed the request by Lisa Johnson to rezone 1.5 acres from agricultural district to AR Agricultural Residential District, or construct one new single-family home at east of 5405 Miller Creek Road. The, it was moved by AG and seconded by Shares to approve the request for Lisa Johnson to rezone 1.5 acres from agricultural district to AR Agricultural Residential District, in order to construct a new single-family home at east of 5405 Miller Creek Road. The request was unanimously approved, of one parcel containing the 1.5 acres. The proposed rezoned area has been zoned agricultural district since the adoption of zoning warrants in 1982. The surrounding area consisted of agricultural land with some rural homes, and a zoned agricultural district to the south. Line on the north and west is zoned AR Agricultural Residential District. Line to the east is zoned A-Agricultural District, and AR Agricultural Residential District. The rezoned area is designated as residential on the future land use map, a component of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. None of the rezoned areas located in a special flood hazard area. The line evaluation score of, of 100, and the lease score of 254, indicating higher agricultural value. Property and parcel has a lease score of 254, and out of 300, which is considered a high agricultural value site. The zoning warrant notes that land that is classified as having higher agricultural value should be strongly discouraged for development. In almost every case, all states that in general, these sites reserved for agricultural activities and protected from urban development or urban use encroachment. However, the warrant also states, only under very clear circumstances are these sites to be developed after compelling evidence is provided. Area has not been in an active rock production or conservation reserve program for previous 15 years. Area is not conducive to production by reason of parcel shape or size. Area is compatible with surrounding uses by reason of similar adjacent uses, meaning any one of these criteria should not constitute approval, as each request will be reviewed and evaluated based on its own individual circumstances. It should be noted that the rezoned area is pasture, and is not in rock production. And it should also be noted that it is designated, the, the property is designated as residential on the future land use map, despite the high lease score, and it's surrounded by homes. The planning and zoning unanimously approved the request at the regular meeting on March 21st, 123. The technical review committee did note the high evaluation score, but did also indicate that the future land use map for the area does designate the site as residential, and that is the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for Seth?
Nope.
And applicants here as well?
Great. I was gonna say, if the applicant would like to make any comments or not, it's up to-
I don't really have anything to say, but if you have any questions for me.
No, that's great. I was gonna say, no, just, I was gonna say, would you give your name and address, and, before you speak, and if you have anything you want to add?
My name is Lisa Johnson. I live in Vinton, Iowa, and I basically want to rezone and live on the property with my brother, and keep it kind of in the family.
That's helpful information. So thank you. No further questions or comments? Anybody you'd like to? Okay, there's been a motion and a second, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The resolution to suspend the rules requiring the Board of Supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance of two prior meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Velka.
Yes.
Yes. Item five, the ordinance adoption, then ordinance amending ordinance number 36 as amended, the Blackhawk County, Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February 2nd, 1999, by adding subsection number 278 to section 6B, rezoning certain property as described on the above requests submitted by Lisa Johnson, and to consider the same for adoption, and if adopted, would be known as ordinance number 77-278.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. If there are no further questions, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Velka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes. Thank you. Item, it's now 1027, is the hearing on the proposed conditions amendment for ordinance number 77-220 Ahava Acres LLC. Motion to receive and place on file proof of publication.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Hearing done. Motion carries. Motion to waive the first reading as notice was published on April 10th, 2023, in the Waterloo Courier, in accordance with requirements-
So moved.
-of the Code of Iowa. It's been moved and seconded. Thank you. And it was for the Ahava Acres LLC conditional amendment to allow for indoor weddings within the CM Commercial Manufacturing District at 1902 East Rock Road. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to close the hearing as oral and written comments were received and placed on file.
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded. Mr. Reader, were there any written comments?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Seth?
Okay, yeah, this is a, just a, this is at 1902 East Rock Road, Vei Acres LLC, just request for conditional amendment to allow for indoor weddings within the CM Commercial Manufacturing District. It was moved by Shares and seconded by AG to approve the request by Vei Acres LLC for conditional amendment to allow for indoor weddings within the CM Commercial Manufacturing District at 1902 East Rock Road. Properties have been zoned CM Commercial Manufacturing District, one is rezoned from agricultural district with conditions. The condition one is that, one, the commercial kennel boarding grooming operation be limited no more than 25 dogs, that no permanent structures shall be placed on the easterly 350 feet of said property. Three, that neighbor agreement is in place between Kelly and Travis Bush at 1902 East Rock Road, and Blake and Sally Hollis, who own parcel 881335226002, that is to the west and south of the described property, in order to minimize conflicts regarding- in order to minimize conflicts regarding the long-established agricultural activities. And four, the commercial kennel and outdoor weddings shall be the only uses allowed on said property. In addition to the single-family dwelling and incidental uses, the applicant has no intention of operating kennel on the property. The surrounding land use is agricultural district to north, southeast, and west. Property is owned, is identified as agricultural on the future land use map. Properties to north, southeast, and west are also identified or designated as agricultural for the proposed, yeah, special, for the most conditional amendment area. None of the land is located within a special flood hazard area as designated by FEMA. No, LISA score is required for this request because it's just a conditional amendment. The location was previously approved to have outdoor weddings and operated as Willow Wedding Gardens on the eastern edge of the property. The site already contains a home and accessory structures that have been previously used for kennel operation. The site has, has a 90 by 100 parking area comprised of concrete and gravel that will meet the minimum parking requirements. If 200 persons attend a wedding, the parking requirements would be one car for every six attendees, which equates to 34 spaces. That requirement has been met. Planning and zoning commission approved this site plan to allow for the enclosure of an existing 64 by 30, 1,920 square feet venue building with two 12 by 15 additions and one 29 by 30 addition for a total square footage of 4,332 square feet. Site plan review only needs to go before Planning and Zoning Commission for approval, and it was previously approved. Planning and zoning commission approved the site plan review and conditional amendment at the regular meeting on March 21st, 2023. The area in question is not within the Waterloo Airport. Land use and height overlay review area. The technical review committee did not have any issues regarding this request. So basically, the site plan review was approved, so they're gonna construct a larger building, and that was already approved by Planning and Zoning Commission. For the zoning ordinance, they're the only ones that need to do the site plan review. They're basically here asking just for a conditional amendment. They're already allowed, they don't plan and operating a kennel on the property like the previous user, or the, but, you know, they will abide by the conditions placed on the property and the property owners. You know, the agreement is still in place with those to the south, even though it's a new owner. And they have, they didn't have any objections at all to the request. And so they're, you know, that's why there was kind of like limited discussion because everybody was okay with it. And the only things that was changing is just a larger venue building and basically just to allow for indoor weddings at the updated facility. And I believe I have two folks here that are part of the group that is going to be doing this. Would you like to add or speak or anything for the request or?
Unless you ask me something.
Oh, okay, all right. Thank you.
That was great. I was curious to who the property owners were because I said we'd refer to it as the Hava Acres, and I just thought to the individuals I was wondering about. So these are the two individuals that own the property?
No, I do have one comment.
Oh, sure, sure, yeah, if I stated it something incorrectly.
Oh.
I think it's an easy decision, but I do want to say, so the only reason it looks like it is previously approved for outdoor weddings only is the previous owners didn't intend on that building to be used as indoor weddings. And then when it was purchased by the new owners, they found out it was being used for indoor weddings and didn't know that it wasn't zoned that way. I think that's circumvent some engineering. So we've done all that engineering now for it to be used for indoor weddings. Doesn't make any sense to have a wedding venue where you can have the wedding outdoor and big building there for nothing. Anyway.
No, appreciate that. Thank you. Anything else you want to add, Seth?
I think that that does cover everything associated with the reason for the conditional amendment is I don't know why they only did indoor and then not do outdoor. And then I think they, and, you know, the previous owners started and closed the building and building department wasn't aware when it occurred. But now they've submitted a new set of plans to building inspection. And then, you know, I guess this would be the, you know, the last hurdle that they need to take for PNZ and Board of Supervisors. And then it's just simply a matter of the building department updating the new reviewing, approving the new plan for the commercial site. And then I do my planning and zoning sign off as well, so.
And then the neighbors signed the conditional easement or whatever. That was already signed, so that's just part of the agreement.
Mm-hmm.
So fair.
Yeah, just kind of added to an existing agreement.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Any other questions or comments? All right, there's been a motion and a second to close the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Resolution to suspend the rules requiring the Board of Supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance conditions amendment at two prior meetings.
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I was gonna say, please answer as your name is called. I'm assuming no, no discussion.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Resolution that the conditional amendment to allow for indoor weddings within the CM Commercial Manufacturing District at 1902 East Rock Road be approved.
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations. Item 10, work session. Discussion on American Rescue Plan Act County Projects. We have any introductory comments? Or we just want Mr. Hendrickson is going to present the conservation projects and an update on that? Is there anything, Michelle?
I don't necessarily have any comments. I did provide you with updated worksheets. Because more information is trickling in, so. Not very much different. I did update one of the conservation projects, the McFarland septic to a more likely range. So I added 100,000 to that. And that leaves us with funds remaining of 1,076,731. And granted, a lot of the numbers, and there are still estimates. So we just have to keep that in mind here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hendrickson?
Good morning, Board. Mike Hendrickson, Director with Blackhawk County Conservation. I've got some handouts here. I'll work through this. I sent those, but I can give these to you if you need one follow.
Sure, that'd be great.
Thanks. Take it if you have enough, thanks. It's easier to read this way.
Yeah, it is. I was already trying to do it.
Sir?
Okay, I can zip through these in just a couple of minutes and answer any questions along the way. But when we started the work session last week and we looked at the spreadsheets up there, there were just a couple of things that to us appeared to be a little confusing. And it sounded like, obviously, everybody wants clarity with these things so we can find out exactly where we're sitting. So this is conservation's attempt to just get everybody on board with where we are. And this is very up to date, very real time. So right out of the gate, our biggest project, the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. We are working on Division 1, which we talked about is the south nine and a half miles of the trail. They are working on, the first contract for phase one of that contract was the Mud Creek Bridge and two culverts. They are winding that work up. It will be completed in the very near future, and we will be doing final walkthroughs and checklists with the engineer. And then we will proceed to Phase 2 of Division 1, which is the paving portion. So the, and the paving portion is estimated to be about $2.5 million. That would finish that Division 1, which ended up being right at 3.8 or 3.9 million dollars. 1.4 million of that is Destination Iowa funds. They are dedicated towards that portion of the trail. Long ago, when we started this process, we did speak and we did tag a number, or a number was tagged as we thought anyway. And I want to lay that out there just so that we've got confirmation of that. But when we talked about the Cedar Valley Nature Trail from the beginning, there was, our understanding was a $5 million, basically placeholder for the entire trail. And so that being said, we're gonna spend about half of that on Division 1. Division 2 is being engineered and will be, and they will be finishing that engineering here shortly. We're looking at about 6 million to do the entire north section, north 16 miles of that trail, to completely have everything done. So we're not expecting that. But we did want to just clarify the fact that that other 2.5 million is still there for us to work on Division 2 because we can do a lot of the structures, the bridges that are left that need to be worked on. Those are the toughest things to have to deal with on that trail. And if we could put some of those away with the rest of this designated ARPA money, then we would almost be down to just overlaying that 16 miles of trail with asphalt. We could work that into capital projects. So that's our goal. Just wanted to make sure. And Michelle, do you, or Mike on the committee, do you guys, is that still where we are with that? So we've got a placeholder with that 5 million? Okay, all right. Moving on then, the Hickory Hills Wastewater Treatment Facility, slightly over $700,000. That, we have signed the contract and we are underway. So completion date with that is going to be just passed right around August the 25th. Hopefully, we'll have great weather and they will get that knocked out. And that will be a big thing off of our plate for that park. The HVAC systems at the administrative office, that was almost a quarter of a million dollars. We are simply waiting on the engineer who we have selected to design that project. We are waiting to get confirmation that they are registered with SAM.gov. That has been something that, it's been a problem we've run into with everyone. And for those departments that haven't got those projects rolling, prepare yourself. We are in about month three waiting on this. We have had a contract ready to go, but we won't sign it until we get that confirmation. And this is taking forever. And it's only because that system is being flooded with these very same requests. Prior to the ARPA dollars, this process should take two weeks. And these, and if you're a contractor that's not registered, you should be registered in two weeks. It's taking up to three months. And so we're just sitting there until we get that confirmation. That's what held up the Hickory Hills septic system, too. They finally got through, they finally got registered, and we were able to move on. The van, the turtletop van for the nature center, that was approved and it was ordered on May the 11th. We originally were told that we would be receiving that about now. And they pushed that back now to very late 2023 or early 2024. So that's where that is sitting.
Is there a concern, Mike, that that cost will actually increase? Because we've had that happen before.
Absolutely.
Order a vehicle and possible.
Absolutely. We, you know, very, we sound very pessimistic here, but we fully expect when that thing gets built and they contact us, that that won't be the price. And so we'll be coming back here and saying, well, there we go. I don't know, I don't know. We're not very hopeful that it will remain that price, so.
Did we think the 103, was that realistic, though?
That was right, that was the bid. That was the exact bid. We didn't, we didn't put any fluff on that at all. That was the bid that came back after we did the RFP. So that's actual dollars. But as we found out with vehicles, as everybody's found out with vehicles, that doesn't mean much. So we'll, we'll see what happens when we get there. The Sioux Coe Shower, $114,000. Contract's been signed for quite some time. They are ready to go ahead and move. They're waiting on weather, and that project will be finished at the end of May. And that will be done and taken care of barring materials issues that they might run into. But right now, we're pretty positive with that. The ADA playgrounds, $240,000. We're looking at four different parks to put these ADA playgrounds in. It doesn't necessarily mean we're going to spend 60,000 in each one of those parks. It depends on, once we, once we hire a company to go ahead and put these in, they will go onsite and they will determine what fits that park and the size that we have designated as to where that playground is going to go. They will tell us how big they think it should be and the whole thing. So it will be, it will roll around just a little bit. But those RFPs were released and they're due back on May the 5th. And then we have a committee ready to go. We will sit down immediately and start evaluating those RFPs, and we will choose a company to get approved, to move forward with that.
Mike, could you shoot me over what those parks are?
Yes, yep, absolutely. Thanks. Yep. And then lastly, the last two projects that were approved for conservation, the shower building facility in Blackhawk Park, and that was for engineering only. There was $10,000 there. We are still waiting on those engineers to get us a number. I think, Michelle, we went ahead and gave you a, just something. I mean, we threw something out there, that's all.
Shari gave me an estimate of 80, but we, I knew that didn't include some engineering, so I added a total of 100.
Okay, all right.
It just does like.
And we're hoping, we have been pressuring these people. We're hoping to have some information, actually by the end of this week. They keep promising it to us. So we'll see, and then we'll have some better numbers. We just don't know. And then McFarland Park, the septic system at McFarland Park, $7,900 for, and that was again for engineering only. We have had quotes given to us, or numbers given to us, of around $80,000 if that system can be replaced. The situation with this is, when we went out for this engineering, it was only to find out if it was even feasible to do this or if we were going to be able to get permitting through the DNR to replace the septic system that's there with one that's the same size. And then was the leach field, as it's lying right now, was it still going to be permitted by the DNR? If that wasn't going to be the case, then we probably would be backing out of this thing. We did find out through perk tests and what they do to determine eligibility of an area for a leach field. Everything is fine that way. We found that out so far. But we're still waiting to find out. We're setting, trying to get a meeting set up with the DNR this week to find out if they're going to require us to do flow monitoring. If they do that, which is what we had to do for Hickory Hills, they ask us to do, actually, I believe, like a year and a half of flow monitoring to see, to be able to size the system the right way. I do not think that's necessary for this park. We have put forth to the engineer our arguments as to why we don't think it's necessary for that park. But we'll find out, we're going to meet with the DNR and find out if they will buy that story, too. I think it's, I don't think they need to do it. If they require us to do that, then that project is probably going to be taken off the ARPA situation because we can't meet the calendar timeline. If they ask us to do a year of flow monitoring, we're gonna be out. We can't get it taken care of, so. That's everything we have that has been approved. We have some other things out there. One of the things, I guess I would ask this question while I'm here, with a project like Blackhawk Park, project like McFarland, and it sounds like Michelle has made some placeholders for that. I know that most of the money, it's been mentioned several times, it's been allocated and ready, you know, it will be spent. Can these things, since this was for engineering only, can these things be placed on a secondary list? So if there is money left over, in the end, you could grab these and go with them. They will be shovel-ready. There won't be any waiting. And we know they're not funded at this point, and we know there's not much left to even ask for. But if we have projects like that, can there be a secondary list that you could go to if you needed to go to those?
I think that'd just be wise.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
Have a secondary list ready to go.
Sure. And it's just those two projects right now?
It's those two.
Building and the McFarland Park septic.
We have another project that could be quite large that would, from what we've been told, would fit ARPA funding through water quality. The state preserve area at Hartman Reserve, sorry. The state preserve area at Hartman Reserve, sorry. The state preserve area at Hartman Reserve has been facing very dramatic erosion for many, many years. I know Mr. Fish, who was the director prior to me, worked very hard to try to find funding to try to get this stuff slowed down. He was never able to do that because there isn't much out there to help with this. We are actually having that area engineered. We are having those gullies engineered, and we very quickly will have those plans back to help slow that down and, and actually start to eliminate some of those problems before it gets any worse. And we will have a cost estimate as to where that would go. Again, it's a water quality project. We think that it would go through. We've chatted with you, Mike, just briefly on that. We don't have all the details, but we feel like it would be eligible. That could be quite large, but again, if that was something we could just simply place on a list, if there's nothing there, there's nothing there. But it might be something, it would again be a shovel ready project, ready to go. And it would just be, okay, we have this money that didn't get spent, we could utilize that. So I'm, I'll throw that one out there, too.
Did you say the additional McFarland project was 60,000? Or I think we had it in, one of our lists is 60. Is that the total estimating?
It's a different one. It's McFarland Septic. There is, and I've, so I've added 100 to that one.
Okay.
I didn't, and maybe I got confused. I don't know if the flow monitoring is before construction.
The flow monitoring would have to be done before construction.
So that's the issue.
Yep.
So I added 100,000. They thought construction might be 80, but we expect additional engineering and possible flow monitoring. So I just plucked 20,000 out of the air and, and made the total estimate 1079.
And the shower building was how much?
The shower building, I didn't have any.
We've literally, we've gotten nothing from, from the engineer, but we hope to have some, we have pressured them and pressured them, and we've said, you've got, you gotta get us something.
Okay.
I think because it's a small project, we got put way down on the list. But we are pressuring them, and we hope to have something this week, early next week with, with a number. We just don't have anything. We gave Michelle a number.
No, I don't even have a number.
Okay, okay. We were just kind of brainstorming as to what we think they might do to that shower facility. We just don't know.
Okay.
But we're waiting on them, so.
Madam Chair?
Any other questions I can help you with?
Any questions? Brad, did you have one?
I, I just wanted to mention something that I heard yesterday in a call with the National Association of Counties. They are presently lobbying to get the, the date, the deadline for obligating funds to 2026. And, you know, it's, it's not a done deal, but they, they sound fairly optimistic about it. And so, you know, that, that could facilitate some of these things that are unsure of or having the flow monitoring issue.
Okay.
But, you know, that's, that's just out there. Don't know where it's gonna go.
That's good. I mean, we all kind of hoped for something like that, but you don't know until you actually receive word of it. But no, appreciate it that you've had an update. Thank you. Any other questions for Mike?
That's where conservation sits at the moment.
And you'll, you'll get back to us with the parks list just for.
Yep, yep. We'll get you the parks list, and as soon as we hear from those engineers, we can give those to Michelle, and we'll get them to you, too.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. So is there anything, I guess on the list, whether it's the new and provided or from old or whatever, we want to discuss next week or talk about, or it can be open tomorrow, next week? We, we agreed to just add it, you know, on the agenda so we can always come back with questions and comments or discussion, but.
There was a meeting at the end of this week about elections, about the elections office.
Oh, a space committee, I think, and that got moved to like tomorrow.
It's tomorrow.
And then, and then an update on that maybe after.
Maybe, maybe that conversation at next week's meeting?
Sure. Yeah. If not, we'll have it on there and see if the space committee or the group that, yeah, whatever the project is, yeah, we talked about doing that after a space committee meeting,